I, I'd like to call this meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Trustees to order. And if, Bernice, if you would do the roll call.
Trustee Acosta. Trustee Estrada. Trustee Nichols. Trustee Sanchez.
Here.
President Van Allen, from Trustee Van Allen.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
President Roth.
Here. And we have established a quorum, so we may go forward. Do, we don't have anyone requesting any board member.
No board members have requested attendance under.
So, Dr. Sabah, if you'd lead us.
If you are able to, please stand, face the flag, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval of the agenda.
Uh, move.
Second. Motion made by. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So the motion passes unanimously. Trustee, I'm hoping that maybe one of you all will fill that role. Public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items outside the agenda. The board president will recognize any member of the audience not previously placed on the agenda who wishes to speak on a matter directly related to school business. Each speaker on any specific topic may speak up to three minutes, otherwise limited or extended by the president. The president may allot time to those wishing to speak, but no action will be taken on matters presented. If appropriate, the president or any member of the board may direct that matter be referred to the superintendent's office for placement on a future agenda. We have any?
Seeing no requests for public comment, President Roth.
Now, moving on to item five, the consent agenda. These are all recommended actions which are considered to be routine. Are there any items that any of the board members? Redirect to later. So, um, I have a motion to accept the consent. Move to approve the consent agenda. And who, Bruce?
Rachel.
All those in favor say aye. Motion passes. Correspondence. Is, has there been any correspondence received within the last seven?
Aside from what was included in your packet, you did receive correspondence regarding an invitation to attend an author's book event. I emailed that over to you. And then I've also provided correspondence from our office inviting you all to attend the open enrollment question and answer later this month.
Now, moving into item 7.1. Very exciting. This is concerning our student trustee academy presentation. And Dr. Sabah.
Yes, thank you so much, President Roth. This is, I think, as you probably share this, the excitement, looking forward to this day. Three years ago, we decided to establish a student trustee academy to be able to support students who are interested in learning more about how, how school boards work. And as you know, there has been a significant increase both in the participation of students in our school boards, as well as interest in how school boards and how the educational system works. I had the pleasure of partnering with our, our student engagement and leadership coordinator, Andres Ortiz, this year. And I have to say that this has been the most outstanding group of students we've ever had a chance to work with. Hopefully, hopefully, nobody from the other groups is, can, can, will hear that. This, we're, this is kind of the culmination of their summer. And we've, we had the, the joy of, of, and honor of having a member, a board member, Van Allen, participate, as well as staff presentations and some other presentations that you're going to be hearing about in just a moment. But I have to say that for us, in working with these young people and thinking about what education is all about, when I think about why I, and I think many people have gotten into education, maybe why you are sitting here as board members, I think about young people who are looking at their voice and their role and thinking critically about how democracy works, how representation works, and what their role is to be able to change our schools, our community, and our society for the better. And I couldn't have selected a better group of young people to share and learn from this summer than, from than the group that we had this, this, this afternoon. And I think, once you hear a little bit about what they brought and what they learned this summer, you'll probably agree with me. And so at this point, I'd like to turn it over. Are we going to jump right into, with students, or Andres, are you going to be starting us off? Okay, well, let's, please welcome Andres Ortiz, our student leadership and engagement coordinator.
Thank you, Dr. Ferris Sabah, trustees of the board, thank you for having us. Like Ferris said, he pretty much said it all. This is a wonderful group of students. This year, we were fortunate enough to have at least one student from every comprehensive high school within the county, as well as students from Delta and St. Francis as well be a part of the, the academy this year. So I'm super thrilled and I'm very proud of this group. And that's all I'll, I'll say for now. So let's go ahead and start opening up this presentation by welcoming Kayla.
Hello, members of the board. I hope you're having a great day. My name is Kayla Nino, the SoCo High Student Trustee for the new school year. I participated in this year's Summer Trustee Academy, and I'd like to start by giving an overview of the program. The Student Trustee Academy is designed for students who currently serve as student trustees, those who aspire to serve, or anyone interested in school governance and student advocacy. It's open to students in grades seven through 11th in Santa Cruz County. This program helps build valuable leadership skills. During the program, we engaged in public speaking exercises, we conducted research, we analyzed data and demographics, and learned about the Santa Cruz County school boards. These activities helped us understand how the boards operate, enabling us to serve more effectively this year. We also had the chance to connect with others and understand how the school boards operate. We, from different schools, fostering a supportive community of young leaders. We were privileged to hear from experienced people of the board, Dr. Ferris Sabah, Andres Ortiz, and guest speakers, Bruce Van Allen, Leanne Reyes, Troy Cope, and Sarah Katz, and Lozano Smith, who shared their valuable insights and experiences. Their guidance was instrumental in helping us prepare for our roles. Overall, this academy has made a positive impact on our school communities. Thank you for your time and support.
Hello, members of the board, Superintendent Sabah. My name is Julia Peavers, and I'm a 10th grader at Santa Cruz High. Today, I hope to share with you a few of the many reasons why students such as myself chose to join the academy. To begin, many of us simply wanted to learn more about the roles and responsibilities of student trustees and how to perform these roles to the best of our abilities. Additionally, we wanted to gain experience and become more familiar with the processes and functions of a board. Another thing that drove many of us to join the academy was the prospect, prospect of connecting with like-minded individuals and sharing ideas and experiences. However, I would say that probably the biggest reason many of us choo, chose to join the academy was to learn how to make a difference, be it at our school, for ourselves, for the community, for the county, or otherwise. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Sabah. My name is Charlie Burgess, and I'm going to be attending San Lorenzo Valley High School next year as a 10th grader. We learned many things in this academy, such as the Brown Act and how important it is for the community to know what's going on inside of the board meetings and how important that is. We also learned about Robert's Rules and how important it is for the public to fully understand what's going on inside board member, board meetings, and to fully just like have clarity on that. We also learned how to do public speaking and use our voice and have clarity and audibility so people can understand us when we're speaking. We also learned about school budgets and how are the funds are distributed through the school and how they are decided within the board. And we also learned about ethnic studies and how it is important to learn about our past and how we have come as a whole, as a community, and how it's important to know that, not make the same mistakes that we did before, or just stuff. Thank you for having me, and I hope everyone's having a good evening.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Sabah and members of the board. My name is Israel Barrosa, and I will be a 9th grader at Baharo Valley High School this fall. I want to share my thoughts on why having a student trustee academy is important. Imagine you're a student who's thinking about participating on the board. Wouldn't you like to be prepared and know what you're committing to? I know I would. I think it would be important that you understand what the board does, how meetings are run, and who runs them. As a student trustee, you should also know that you get to make a statement at the beginning of the meeting. This way, you can be prepared when the board president calls on you. The academy makes sure that future trustees are informed and prepared for the responsibilities they will have as, as a student representative, and how they can be effective trustees. In general, all students benefit from learning how the board operates because they learn how, how to voice their opinions on issues, to the board on issues that directly affect them. Thank you for your time.
Hi, back. So I'm reading this statement on behalf of Kira McGlashan, who unfortunately couldn't be here today. My name is Kira McGlashan, and I'm a senior at Santa Cruz High School. I will be student trustee next year. My peers and I believe it is very important for us to continue this program into the future. For generations, we have seen young people's power. We've seen our youth protest wars, fight climate change, and make global impact. In order to maintain this impact, keeping this academy alive is imperative. I've known I wanted to be a lawyer since I was 10 years old, and although that dream has changed as I've grown, it's academies like this that keep it alive. I hope more than anything that my peers and future generations continue to find outlets for their passions, goals, and dreams. This academy should continue into the future to ensure that our youth are equipped with the knowledge they need to not only survive in the world, but to help make it a better place. Thank you.
Hello, members of the board, Superintendent Sabah. I'm Brandon Blake, a student currently enrolled at Aptos High School as a junior. As previously discussed, the Student Trustee Academy provides a valuable service to the communities within this county by educating its students in topics such as public speaking, the functions of the board, and governmental legal code. This greater knowledge encourages students to pursue some of the topics or beliefs that they believe are right for the county, and it helps them, it teaches them the knowledge that they need to see those goals met and some other potential issues that they may feel very passionate about. This in turn could be very influential to many other counties throughout the state of California, which don't have a program like the Student Trustee Academy, and could very much benefit from many of the new perspectives brought on by students through, for controversial topics and issues that they may face. Thank you for your time.
Dear members of the, oh, sorry. Dear members of the board and Superintendent Sabah, my name is Melina Rocha, and I attend Watsonville High, and I'm in the 11th grade. Today, I wanted to talk about why I will recommend the Student Trustee Program to other students. Firstly, to learn about the school board. For example, when I joined the Student Trustee Program, I didn't know there was a school board. I didn't know that there was student trustees or about the Brown Act. I basically came into this program blind. But as I attended these classes, I was able to learn important information about the school board and how it works and makes decisions. Secondly, this program helps you become a leader and helps us work together to successfully help students reach their goals. I want to thank the board members that attended our meetings. They shared important information about how the school board works. We appreciate your dedication to the students of the Santa Cruz County, and thank you for your time.
Members of the school board, Superintendent Sabah, my name is Natalie Stott. I'm going into the 11th grade, and I attend St. Francis College Preparatory. This program helped us develop essential leadership skills by improving our public speaking, confidence, and critical thinking skills through group activities and discussions. For example, we practiced respectful body language, asked questions to get to know each other, and played the game Describe It, Draw It, to emphasize clear communication. And we would also have former mayor Bruce Van Allen teach us how to present a strong speech. We learned to assertively express our ideas and understand our responsibilities as student trustees. Initially, I didn't understand the importance of body language and tone and being clear and to the point. But through these activities, I've become more welcoming in my demeanor and more selective in my diction. Public speaking is crucial to persuade and galvanize an audience, so it's important to have a strong, confident voice that's going to add to your credibility, and people are more likely to listen to what you have to say. As student trustees, we are able to advocate for our communities and effectively represent student perspectives. And in our future careers, these new skills enable us to engage and connect with our peers, build trust and collaboration, and make us reliable leaders. Thank you for your time.
Hello, thank you for having me, members of the board, Superintendent Sabah. My name is Natalia Calderon. I go to Harbor High School. I'm going into the 12th grade, and I will be student trustee. I think student leadership opportunities are important because they help with learning how to be a good leader and being a voice for students, which also helps with making the right and informed decisions and with shaping a better future for other students. Thank you for your time.
Hello, members of the board, Superintendent Sabah. My name is Asher Chopra, and I am a 10th grader at Santa Cruz High. Having student representation is very important because it brings a unique perspective that can help improve the overall educational experience for all students. Student representation provides valuable insights on issues that directly affect them, such as curriculum, school policies, and student well-being. Student representation can also foster a sense of empowerment throughout the student body, leading to a better decision-making process, process within the school community. Student representation can motivate learners and make a sense of belonging in a school setting and improve the overall school experience for all students. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, good afternoon, esteemed members of the board and Superintendent Sabah. My name is Daniel Skedda, an upcoming 12th grader attending Aptos High School. I have been honored to be chosen as the PBUSD Student Trustee for this upcoming school year. Today, I want to bring your attention to a report that we covered during our Student Trustee Academy, conducted by Doc, by Dr. Jessica K. Taft, a UCSE reporter who specializes in Latin American and Latino studies. Dr. Taft's two-long-year research study evaluated student trustee participation in Santa Cruz County board meetings, and the findings were disappointing for many. The report concluded that adult members commonly neglect, disregard, and brush off student board members when they try to contribute to meetings. Such behaviors prevent collaboration between adults and the youth. These findings are concerning as they limit the purpose of having a student trustee on the board and ultimately silence the student voice responsible for representing all students. It is crucial for student voices to be heard and to be taken into account on a governing board that holds extreme power and makes decisions that impact all students. The findings of Dr. Taft's reports not only hurts, hurts student representatives within our community, but also hinder the potential for positive change and progress. Through proper education, such as the Student Trustee Academy, we can learn to not be silenced and use our voices to make a positive impact. Please consider the significance of student voices and ensure that student trustees are respected and valued members of the board. I'm immensely grateful for the opportunity to immerse myself in the Student Trustee Academy, and I thank all you board members for allowing this academy to shape us into really, into the brilliant and motivated human beings we can be. Through Superintendent Sabah and Andres Ortiz's guidance, we have become knowledgeable about the process of the board and our education system. I am forever grateful to have such passionate individuals helping us adolescents uplift our community. Thank you.
Members of the board, Superintendent Sabah, my name is Samson Sartre. And I'm a senior at Delta High School. In regards to the UCSE report, there were recommendations that came along with it, those being helping the trustees and people have more knowledge about board meetings and how they work and the parts within them, and mentorships between board members and trustees to help that respect and feel like everyone feel heard. And just overall more respect given to the student trustees. Thank you for taking these into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Superintendent Sabah. My name is Toko Mohammed. I am a, I'm going to be a junior at Scotts Valley High School, and I was a member of my Scotts Valley USC board last year, and I have the honor of coming back this upcoming school year. Now, one of our students, Maximiliano Baraza, could not be here, so I'll be reading a statement written by him. He says, "My name is Maximiliano Baraza, and I will be a sophomore at Power Valley High School in the fall. I will also be applying to be your student trustee. It's important for parents and students to understand how school board meetings work because it helps board meetings go smoothly and orderly. For example, the public needs to know when they are allowed to make comments and how long their comments can last. The public should also know what meetings they can end, such as open versus closed meetings. It's important for the public to know that the board needs to follow rules as well. These rules are there to prevent the, the board from corruption, and it allows the public to hold the board accountable. For example, board members aren't allowed to have private meetings with each other about action items in the agenda. When the public doesn't know or understand these rules, then corruption, chaos, and disorder can occur. Thank you for your time." And I'll be reading my speech. So, dynamics between adults and student members of the board should create a healthy environment where students feel like they are allowed and encouraged to give their opinion on a variety of different topics. As we saw in the UCSE report, student voices are not being heard, and that's really disappointing. Creating a healthy dynamic will make it easier for students to speak their minds. So first, let me start with things that don't foster this healthy dynamic. In my experience on the board, board members seem to talk down to student trustees, but not in the way that you might think. Instead of treating us like our opinions don't matter, they'll inflate or make it seem like our ideas are these amazing new concepts, for like, yeah, they'll make it seem like they're amazing new concepts when they're really just basic things. For example, I would say, I, they think I invented electricity, when actually I just said that people are probably skipping class because classes are boring. It's better than ignoring an idea. It creates a dynamic that suggests that student voices are not equal to adult student trustee voice, or adult voice, adult trustee voices. Oh, I think I'm a little nervous. Trustee Van Allen told me to say that. Now, what a healthy dynamic does look like is keeping the conversation inclusive by asking and encouraging trustees to speak. On my board, I often notice that adult trustees will actively ask for my opinion on topics, especially when they aren't certain, which makes me feel like my opinion is wanted and heard. So I hope your current trustee, Oscar, has felt this healthy dynamic, and with your next trustee, I encourage you to actively, make an active effort to include them in conversations and really make them feel like an equal member of the board. Thank you so much, have a good afternoon.
Hello, board members and Superintendent Sabah. My name is Sylvie Kaiser, and I will be a junior at Aptos High School in the fall. My portion of the presentation was under the topic of how can board members entice more students to serve in leadership positions? To begin, there must be a familiarity between the students and the positions. For example, leadership positions feel isolated from students due to a lack of age-appropriate communication. The Student Trustee Academy was advertised through Aptos by an email sent out by the principal, which a majority of youth do not check as frequently as their adult counterparts, making it a less effective means of communication. A better coverage would be through the school's social media, as well as school announcements. Secondly, there must be a motivation for students to join these leadership positions, such as community service, experience for college, or something tangible, such as a certificate for validation of completion. Thirdly, there must be appreciation for the students serving the position, as well as youth who have served in the past. It is extremely important that youth get the same recognition and respect as their adult counterparts to make sure they feel both heard and seen. It is crucial that students feel that there is substance to these leadership positions so that they can meaningfully contribute to both their community and the county of Santa Cruz as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Hello again to members of the board. Thank you for your time and attention today. On behalf of the Student Trustee Academy, I want to really extend our heartfelt gratitude to County Superintendent Dr. Ferris Sabah, student leadership and engagement organizer, Andres Ortiz, and all of our guest speakers that came to the academy and dedicated their time, care, and knowledge. Because of the Student Trustee Academy, we have gained practical experience, leadership, and insights about school governance. We are committed to serving the board to the best of our abilities, and we are inspired to make a meaningful impact this year. Thank you so much for welcoming us. We are wishing you all a wonderful day.
So we do have a little certificates that we would like to present to the students, but we were wondering if the board members would like to share your thoughts or even any questions for the students who just presented to you.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to share that I had the privilege of attending one of the, the sessions last week and was incredibly impressed with the students that were attending. They were engaged and excited, and especially when they got into their work groups. There wasn't a single quiet person. Everybody spoke up, every, everybody felt safe to speak up, and that was really nice to see. And today, I, I didn't know the age groups or the grades in which people were going to be attending, and I'm so impressed. Entering 9th grade, that's so impressive. You did a great job. And our outgoing seniors, wow, it's going to be, it's going to be a wonderful year for our, our student trustees. And just happy to see all of you, and congratulations. Bruce?
Well, I've gotten to see them twice now in their, in the last two years, and I just have to say they're awesome and really touched by. have to say they're awesome and really touched by just having been able to contribute. I do want to point out for the sake of the feelings of us on the county board that that study that you mentioned, which I think is very important, would have done before we ever had a student trustee, who only started that last year. I think maybe it would have looked a little better if we had been in the mix at the time, at least I hope so. I believe this board is, certainly would agree with what you have asked for of boards, and I would encourage you to keep asking for that. And I love that you held our feet to the fire on an important thing about your representation. That's part of what being student trustees is about, is to speak up for the things that affect you and concern you. I congratulate you all, trustees. I'm also impressed that we had three people, I think it was, say they are in the coming year going to be student trustees, and one other person who said they were interested in serving with us, and that's just, that's wonderful. And thank you all. Shout out to Andres for his great work. I love working with you and of course, in the idea person behind this and the one that really made it come into.
Okay, I guess I'll say something because you guys are so amazing, and I just kind of wanted to say that, like echo whatever one else said. I mean, when I came on the board, I, just last year, I was 22, so just a couple of years out of high school, and I wish I could have gone through something like this to prepare me for the position. You guys are so well-prepared. You're all doing amazing work, channeling your energy into leadership, and, you know, a positive outlet like this is going to be super helpful. And you all spoke amazing, so the public speaking and the how-to-make-speeches part, I think, really rubbed off because you were all amazing. And yeah, I look forward to being able to select, you know, our own new trustee, because Oscar, like one of you mentioned, we loved having Oscar. Oscar and I came on at the same time as well. So, we were both newbies, learning the ins and outs of the county board, and so I really look forward to this continuing on and really taking those, your feedback into perspective, especially with the, you know, speaking to students as equals, not different than adults. And I really liked the mention of, you know, kind of, oh, we're not inventing electricity, we're not reinventing the wheel, we're saying things that a lot of other people are feeling and are saying, you know, just outside of this room. And so it's really important to bring that perspective in here for other students. So, thank you, Andres, and, you know, the Student Trustee Academy, I mean, it's amazing.
So I just want to personally thank each and every single one of you for deciding to be in part of a program like this. Your time is very valuable, and I know there's 100 different things that you could be doing, but you chose to learn. You chose to listen and to provide feedback and to make a difference, and that, to me, is very encouraging. It makes me optimistic, you know, for the future and for what's to come. So I also don't have any doubt of the talent that is in this room, and I'm definitely motivated, encouraged, and look forward to hearing what each and every single one of you will accomplish. Thank you.
All right, there we go. I'd like to echo what our board members have said. I'm really, I'm amazed, just the public speaking part, that was phenomenal. I commend you all and everybody else that was the support behind that. I just, wow, that's exciting to see the youth and where they're going and what, and thank you for wanting to volunteer your time and be part of that. So, to see you up here. Thank you.
Of course, I do owe the board this debt, but it just warms my soul that we have people's youth stepping up to leadership and to be, and to partake in leadership training opportunities. Dr. Sabah, in that he has made the student voice in this county loud and vibrant with the creation of this institute, a student-based organization. So, thank you for your time, and I hope that you have gained enough knowledge to start a fire inside you, to commit to your communities wherever you might be, and be a voice. It is extremely important. So, thank you.
And with that, we'd like to present our amazing students with some certificates of completion for participating in the academy. I'm going to ask President Roth to join me, and also Andres, our coordinator of student leadership. And so each student is going to be receiving some goodie bag, and they also received an iPad, or they will be receiving an iPad to support them with their learning and growth and continuing in their role as student leaders. And so that's something that's coming up next. But this certificate really is about their commitment to their learning and their leadership, and the, in some ways, a sacrifice that they made this summer to participate, and, but they not only took some of the knowledge that we talked about, but they brought so much to each other and to me personally. And so I am so grateful to have been able to share this time. I don't get a chance to work closely with students anymore, and I have to tell you that the time I got to spend with you is some of the most valuable time for me every year, and so it's been an honor to work with students. So, our first student, and perhaps the youngest student in the history of the academy, Michelle Barrasa. So, we should maybe, let me do a group photo. This is the first time we've had an incoming ninth grader in the academy, which is wonderful. Our next student is Brandon Blake. Our next student is Charlie Burgess. Natalia Calderon. Asher Chopra. Sylvie Kaiser. Kira McLashan. I don't think Kira's here today, correct? Okay, so we'll, let's give her a round of applause, and we'll get her certificate to her later. Toko Mohammed. Kayla Nino. Julia Peavers. Melina Rocha. Sampson Satherweight? All right. Natalie Stott. Let's give a round of applause for all our students.
I also want to give a shout out to Daniel. Daniel is going to be, so he joined during the last week of our trustee academy, but we were so thrilled to have him. He was such a great addition to our group, and he will be a student trustee for PVUSD next year. So I wanted to give him a round of applause and invite him up. Just to say congratulations and thank you.
All right, so if we could have the both of you jump in the picture and...
Well, in each year... Well, and I think...
I got here on time for the meeting, but because I had to park and walk all the way around, I arrived here a little late, and...
Give us just one moment for us to get the clock started, if you wouldn't mind.
Say that again.
I didn't hear you.
Oh, I said, give us a moment to get the clock prepared for you before you begin speaking. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. I think you received an announcement of a talk by Leon Canarot, the author of the book The Unfortunate Truth About Vaccines: Exposing the Vaccine Orthodoxy. His title of the talk next Tuesday is 12 Reasons Why Vaccines Are the Problems and Not the Solution. And the second edition of the book is out. I just want to read a letter he wrote a few years regarding the elimination of vaccine exemptions. I remember my daughter getting very sick on the DPT shot in 1969. When she graduated from Aptos High in 1985, we signed, parents, something saying we did not want vaccines. So here's what, and there were exemptions, to inject people with what's in these vaccines with no harm, it's very disturbing. Here's what Leon says. "My name is Leon Canarot. I am a retired school psychologist of 35 years, 1972 to 2007. My experience in working with autistic children and their families goes back over 30 years at the preschool, elementary school, high school, and post-secondary levels. From 1980 to 1994, I was one of two school psychologists working with three- to five-year-old preschoolers for the Santa Clara County Head Start Program. I saw firsthand the autism epidemic that took off in the 1990s. In the 1993 to 94 school year, I started seeing children with autistic behaviors for the first time. In the previous 13 years, not one autistic child was seen in Head Start. Talking over the situation with my colleague, we simply could not figure out what was happening. The following school year, I went to work for the Union School District and was on the diagnostic team doing autistic evaluations on these children coming into public school. On a regular basis, we were seeing children coming into kindergarten displaying typical autistic behavior characterized by social avoidance, delayed language, emotional outbursts, high distractibility, and repetitive behavior." And this goes on, and I must say, I started teaching in 1965, retired in 2000, and you never saw this kind of behavior. And his book...
And ma'am, I'm sorry, but your three minutes are up at this point. Thank you very much.
I would like you to come to this talk, and please purchase the book. This is important for health and safety. Okay, let me get, oh, it's, can you take the book for me? It's talking.
Thank you very much. Now going to go to item 7.2, the Santa Cruz County Grand Jury Report.
Yes, thank you so much, President Roth. So, the grand jury recently issued several reports to the community, and one of the areas of focus was on health disparities, and both in physical health as well as behavioral health. And they, the county office of education was cited in one of their reports, and we wanted to give you a quick update on some work that we're doing with the Health Services Agency of the county in response to this grand jury report. I'm going to ask Nikibara, our public information officer, to just give us a little update about what our response is going to entail.
Thank you, Dr. Sabah, hello, President Roth, and members of the board. This item is maybe not quite as exciting as the last agenda item, but I'm happy to be sharing it with you. And I think most of us are familiar with the Civil Grand Jury. This is a body of citizens impaneled by the Superior Court to investigate local government. On June 11th, they released a report entitled County Behavioral Health On June 11th, they released a report entitled County Behavioral Health Services: A State of Mind. And the report is included in your agenda packet, if you'd like to read the full thing. In summary, the report finds that Santa Cruz County is facing essentially an uphill battle to provide sufficient behavioral health services. And in particular, the grand jury identified disparities and cited data targeting the 95076 zip code, South County, the Watsonville area. There are a number of recommendations in the report. They involve transparency, improving government transparency, case management, reducing patient transfers, and focusing services on improving socioeconomic indicators, especially in South County. We are among the required respondents. The grand jury is able to require responses from government entities, and that includes the COE or, in this case, the county superintendent of schools. So there are, we are required to respond to specific factual findings of the report as well as a recommendation in the report that we coordinate with the Board of Supervisors and the county behavioral health to produce a report on the disparities they identified and focus on improving socioeconomic indicators in the Watsonville area. So that is something we are taking a look at currently. Our responses are due August 12th. And this is, as Dr. Sabah mentioned, a purely informational item. The responses are due, not from your board, as they could have been and in the past have been separately requested, but the responses are, in this case, from the county superintendent. So we wanted to bring that forward to you because our office has been named and ensure that you are aware of the report. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. And I apologize, I had not updated the slide when you were speaking, but it is updated now. President Roth, we do have a public comment on this agenda before we turn it over to you for discussion. And I believe the same speaker from the last item is, would like to provide public comment, and we'll have three minutes to speak. Are they not in the room? Okay, I think that that would mean that their opportunity to speak to this item will have lapsed, unfortunately. Okay. So you'll have three minutes to discuss for public comment on the grand jury report.
And the grand jury report is on health, right?
Yes, one of the areas of discussion are physical health and behavioral health disparities with South County.
Okay. Physical and behavioral health has to do with the kind of environment people are in. And as it can do so to good health or not. And I've been here many times about, and I get these blank looks, but the evidence is there about Wi-Fi, radiation, cell phones, cell towers. And here's just one document that says Wi-Fi in the library or anywhere are a convenience or health hazard. Is microwave radiation linked to any serious diseases? Yes, neurological sleep disorders, multiple sclerosis, Alzheimer's, attention deficit, hyperactivity disorder, birth defects, genetic effects, cancer, lung, breast, bladder, skin, colon, and prostate cancers. Other asthma, diabetes, thyroid dysfunction, bleeding disorders. There's a very large document called the Biome Initiative Report. You can check out Cell Phone Task Force. So here are these beautiful young people. And this is the kind of environment of the toxicity, the radiation, the pollutants in the air, the injections they're getting. And this is impacting everyone's health, not to mention this kind of political and environmental disaster that is everywhere about us. So you can wire, you can have wired computers instead of Wi-Fi, and you don't have this danger. It's just very disturbing. If you want to talk about genuine health, we need to have the conditions that enable that health and not act like there's not any problem, like with the autism from the vaccines. Like it's not there, it's there. So I urge you to get this book, The Unfortunate Truth About Vaccines: Exposing the Vaccine Orthodoxy. We're supposed to critique, investigate, challenge, question authority. How many times have we been told that things are safe and good for us? Drugs have been removed from the market a lot. I was in the DDT lawsuit.
Your time is up.
Yeah. Do something to wire the computers, please.
So we'd like to turn it over to the board members if there are any questions or comments about the grand jury report.
Bruce?
Thank you. Well, first I'll note that by my careful reading, we were mentioned in one sentence in the whole report. And it sounded like kind of an add-on. But of course, under Dr. Sabah's leadership, we are doing increasingly more around student health. So it's sort of in our lane anyway, we're in that lane. And unfortunately, the main determinants of the difference in parts of our county from the rest of the county cannot be explained by a number of factors, but can be explained by differences in racial discrimination, the things that hold down large numbers, differences among some of our communities, not differences in cell phone towers or other similar things. I do note that what the grand jury calls for is us to respond in the report that Nick began to outline, that they are basically asking us to talk with the county and particularly to come up with a program. I imagine we're sort of in conversation. So I don't regard this as a big demand that we have to serve. But it is, it does reinforce our role. So in that sense, I'm fine. I'm, I've experienced grand juries kind of going off on the wrong jag and misunderstanding so that that applies to us.
I just had a quick comment. I had an opportunity to go over the report, and it's no surprise, some of the findings with regards to South County and health issues, I found it particularly interesting, the transfer costs and the causes for transfer costs that financially affect us. But on the other hand, I think that some of the things that our county is doing within our students, providing courses like CTE and medical tech and bringing in nonprofit organizations like Your Future is Our Business to expose our students to these professions that are not staying here in our county, because that is one of the causes for those transfers out of our county is cost of living and the ability to have persons filling those roles in mental health. So I think that, like Bruce said, we're pretty in, seeing that our county is providing those type of. Hopefully, they keep them here.
I have a question. I don't know if we have additional information, but I do know that we, as the county office of education, do offer, you know, behavioral health services throughout the county. But specifically, and then 95076, I think PVUSD serves more students than we do in that area. So I'm not sure why we, as a county, were called out versus USD. I don't know if that's part of the response or the question or.
I think that our hope is to be able to share, as a community, as an educational community, what the kinds of services that exist, whether they're being provided by PVUSD or the Power Valley Prevention Student Assistance or COE. But really to help see that the systems are in place or being developed and made stronger and that we definitely are equity focused and that we are looking for where more services are needed and making sure that we are adapting our approach to that. And so it doesn't, I think that we'll be able to share some of the efforts and the things that we're putting in place, whether, you know, from all the different partners that we work with, that we work with Encompass, we work with PVPSA, we work with the federally qualified health centers and other partners. And we'll be sharing how those partnerships are really addressing these disparities and that we, you know, we do feel a responsibility to participate in serving our community.
May I add a quick point, Superintendent Sabah? So it is also important to remember with this report that because we are asked to respond to factual findings, in essence, we are being asked to agree or disagree with those findings, to weigh in on whether or not what the grand jury has identified is factually accurate and to provide context. So that is certainly not inherently negative. And I'm not aware of any specific criticism of our office or our work in this report. We're being asked to weigh in on these systemic issues that the grand jury has identified and affirm whether they're factual, and then in the case of the recommendation, to potentially consider working with partners who, as Trustee Van Allen mentioned, we work with on these issues to an increasing degree.
One last comment. My priority is to get higher pay for teachers, staff, education world, but my next fairly lower priority would be for healthcare workers. So just so we know, because that's part of the problem is hiring. Better pay for people.
And the cost of transfer was. And. And she was transferred actually to Semitae County, where she was served for days, something like that. It was a real hardship. They couldn't support her. Anyway, it was an interesting educational. So thank you. Now onto new business. We need to approve resolution number 24-26 in the matter of authorizing interfund loan for cash flow purposes. The volume when I entered is.
Yes, of course. It's my pleasure to introduce our deputy superintendent in charge of fiscal services. And of course, this is something you've seen before. This is part of our ability to be able to shift resources from one funding source to another. And so Leanne Reyes will be sharing the information in the resolution and asking for your support.
Thank you very much. And that was pretty much a pretty perfect description of what we have here. Again, as I like to say, this is a housekeeping item. We do this every year. In the event that we may have other of our operational funds that fall low on cash flow at the county treasurer down at 701 Ocean Street, which is often confused with us, then we will have the ability to temporarily make transfers between funds, knowing that this is not a permanent transfer, rather, a temporary loan that has to be repaid within a very specific timeframe. So that's the basis for this resolution this evening.
Excuse me. Since this is a resol, or any questions? Since this is a resolution, a call vote is required. There needs a few.
We will need a motion and a second.
Bruce, and is there a second?
Resolution 24-26 in the matter of authorizing interfund loan cash flow.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Bruce, second by Edward. Now.
Trustee Acosta?
Aye.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols? Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen? Trustee Williams? President Roth?
The motion passes nicely. Moving on to item 8.2, approve resolution number 24-27, recognizing the 15th Annual Stuff the Bus Campaign.
Yes, thank you. So it's been 15 years that the county office of education has partnered with United Way of Santa Cruz County to put together resources to help students be prepared for school and especially those who do not have those resources usually. This is a wonderful community event. We raise funds to be able to acquire the resources, and volunteers from a variety of different partner agencies get together and put together these, and really, as the name says, stuff these backpacks with resources and then take those backpacks and stuff the bus with these backpacks. The bus is then brought over to the county office of education, and they're distributed to our programs that serve students who are experiencing homelessness, our students who are in foster youth, and other students who have great need. It's a wonderful opportunity that produces tangible product that helps our students in preparation for the new school year. It's a lot of fun, and we're hoping that you will support this resolution. 15 years is how long we've been doing this. And it's really a great partnership with United Way and other partners. And also, if you have an opportunity to be there on August 2nd, we'll be working on, at the Kaiser Arena, I believe? August 3rd, thank you, on August 3rd. That will be at Kaiser Arena. We'll send you an email with that information as a reminder. And then many of you have participated in the past. So hoping that you would consider approving this resolution and also participating in this one, through a donation or by volunteering.
Is there a motion?
I'll motion to approve resolution 24-27, recognizing the 15th Annual Stuff the Bus Campaign.
Is there a second? I saw. Andrew? Okay. Now, this is a resolution. There needs a few.
Trustee Acosta?
Aye.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols? Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen? Trustee Williams?
Yes.
President Roth?
Yes.
So the motion. Will we get an email? To our.
Yes, I'll be sending you an email for the donation link to our fundraising page as well as information on how to volunteer at Kaiser.
I've received it from United Way, but.
Okay. Yes, please donate to our page.
Here too.
Want the credit.
Anyway, so a great event. Thank you. Time that everyone puts into this. Item 8.3, approved resolution 24-28 in support of the City of Santa Cruz's Sugar-Sweetened Beverage Tax Proposal.
Yes, I'd like to start us off, and then I'm going to be introducing our presenter. When we think about health disparities, one of the biggest disparities that we've seen is an increase in obesity and related diseases in our community. This especially impacts families who come from low income, families who are from, have low incomes, also families of color. And one successful strategy that has worked in several other communities in California has been a sugary sweetened beverage tax or sugar-sweetened beverage tax. And what this does, it makes, it raises the costs on those beverages. If you've seen the research and will be hearing a little bit more. Um, if you've seen the, the research and we'll be hearing a little bit more about that. Um, our youth in many cases are averaging one to two drinks of soda a day. Um, the impact it has on a variety of different, uh, physical, uh, conditions and also ones that are correlated with, with, uh, disease is very high. The city of Santa Cruz is, um, has, is working on a campaign, um, to pass this tax in the city of Santa Cruz. And we work, I wanted to share with you that I, I check in with our pediatric work group, um, also our FQHCs and our medical community in many cases, uh, well, our local community absolutely supports anything that we can do to limit the amount of, of sugar sweetened beverages that, that our youth and our families are taking in. We feel like this is one way that we can do that in the best, in the public health communities as well as, uh, potentially, uh, bringing in tax revenue that could be utilized. And so, um, I've, uh, asked that Heather Thompson, who is our manager of school-based health, uh, to come speak with you today about this, uh, resolution. And, um, also in the audience is, uh, Teresa Holman, who is, um, uh, part of the campaign for sugar sweetened beverage tax for the city of Santa Cruz. Um, so I'll turn it over to, uh, Dr. Thompson.
Well, I am just so excited to be here. I have to first and foremost, uh, say, um, the dear, uh, Santa Cruz Board of Education and Superintendent Sabah, my name is Heather Thompson. I'm School-Based Health. And one of the things that we worked on this past school year was to address oral health and hygiene. And I'm really happy to be here today. Teresa Holman is the, uh, campaign manager in case there's any intimate questions. Um, but we had some really great success, um, related to school-based health and oral health. This was the first year, uh, where all of our 10 public unified school districts, uh, were implementing this kindergarten oral health assessment. And I tell you this because before COVID, um, we didn't have all of our school districts. And this form, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but it's an important form that parents fill out for kindergarten and first grade, and it assesses that they have a dental home. And if they don't, uh, mobile visits from a clinic will come to the campus. So just wanted to say that it's very much in alignment with school-based health. Next slide.
If you push the down arrow, um, it'll move you forward.
Thank you. So I want to just, uh, share that this slide deck, um, is, uh, from city council and in particular council men, council members, Sonia Bruner, Shebra, Callan Tari Johnson, and Martine Watkins. And again, we are here to ask the board if you're willing to adopt a resolution in support of a sugar sweetened beverage ballot proposal. All right, so I love this slide. Um, before we met, I actually went and counted how many sugar cubes are in that Mountain Dew soft drink. And we've all seen the sugar cube. So if you can visualize 37, that's how much sugar is in that one particular beverage. All right, so this slide is really, um, emphasizing, uh, how much disparities there are. And in the Latino and African-American communities, um, they're really being targeted by big sugar industries. Um, and here in Santa Cruz City, you know, we see about 40% children, uh, are at risk of type 2 diabetes and it's, it's higher for Latinos and African-Americans, it's about 50%. Hard to go after the student trustees. They were really amazing. All right, so the, um, yeah, so this is just a slide to demonstrate that the sugar sweetened beverages are the leading cause of, uh, added sugar in the American diet. And also, uh, to point out that the adult obesity is highest amongst Latinas. Uh, and there's a report here from Dominican Hospital just regarding healthy weight and that it's a significant issue in Santa Cruz County with a larger proportion of children who are overweight, uh, for their age compared to all California children. So in addition, the adult obesity is also highest among the county's Latino population. This is some ballot language details. It's just really emphasizing, uh, it's two cents per fluid ounce on the distribution of sugar sweetened beverage products. And this slide is, uh, really to demonstrate that there are some exemptions for this two cent tax. Um, small businesses are going to be exempt. Products such as diet soda, natural juices, milk, um, s- milk substitutes, diet supplements, and alcohol will also be exempt. Um, and this is really just applied, um, with regards to this, let me just get the world. Thank you. Also, I wanted to point out that one thing that was responsible from a poll from the Santa Cruz City residents was that there's going to be a community oversight panel for these funds and that there's going to be up to seven community members. Um, and this, uh, uh, committee is going to be reporting annually on how to spend the funds. And so the next slide is that they anticipate that this will, uh, generate 1.3 million annually. Um, and some really cool things are that from, uh, a recent, uh, survey and poll, the, um, tax money that is generated will go and remain in the city and benefit the community residents, um, to make sure that their parks are in great condition, their beaches are in great condition. And there's also going to be programs and direct services for our children and youth. So I think that'll be a really, uh, wonderful thing and also to maintain facilities for seniors, children, and, uh, people of all ages. So it's, it's a, as it says on the bottom, a very simple and straightforward collection of tax. Um, and then I don't know if you wanted to add anything or if there was any questions, I'd love to introduce Teresa Holman, the campaign manager. Thank you so much for your time. Pleasure to meet you.
Hello, afternoon, board and superintendent. Thank you for having me. Um, again, my name is Teresa Holman and I'm the campaign manager for the sugar sweetened beverage, uh, tax campaign. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, but I just also wanted to reiterate that we also have a successful children's oversight fund committee. And so what that is, it, it was created so that the people on the committee could make re- um, recommendations to the Santa Cruz City Council to ensure that the dollars are invested where, where we say they're going to go. Is there any questions regarding the?
I have questions. Let me go back to the, uh, slide that mentions the exemption. I guess my first question is what is signed as a sugars? Anything that has added sugar?
Yes. Right, so that would be, um, uh, energy drinks, it would be, uh, added sugar juices. So if you were to go to the grocery store and you would see a juice that says no sugar added, uh, it would almost look like a diet juice or something like that, but it's not sugar added, uh, that, that would be exempt. Diet sodas are exempt.
Uh, so I have two concerns. One, I see small businesses. So what stops someone from, uh, no longer buying Coke from Safeway or, um, Costco, but then going down to 7-Eleven or not 7-Eleven, local, uh, corner store to buy it there? If I'm reading that correctly, a small local store wouldn't tax sugary beverages, correct?
Correct, that's correct. So who would be taxed? Would be big sugar industry, they would be taxed and.
You could, uh, use the microphone so it gets recorded, thank you.
Yes, so the, the industries that would be taxed.
So it's not the retailer, it's the actual product itself?
Yes. Yes, so it would be two cents per fluid ounce charged to the large distributors, not to small businesses. So we want to make sure that people understand that, uh, it's okay for small businesses to vote yes on this measure.
Then what's a fine as a small business?
A small business is, that's a good question. I ha- um, I have the answer to that actually, and I don't have it memorized, but I can email it to you, um, later time, but I do, I do have that answer, I apologize.
And then another concern that I have is that there seems to just be a tax if there's any added sugar. I think as we saw previously with the different products and the varying levels, there's definitely less healthy, less sugary products out there. But I think if, as long as there is some sugar added, it would be taxed the same, right? So if you go back to the, uh, with all the sugar cubes, then a vitamin water would be taxed the same as a Mountain Dew, though it has a third, two and a half less than Mountain Dew, correct?
Right, but there are zero calorie, zero sugar vitamin waters that would not be taxed. And because this, this vitamin water is a regular vitamin water and it has added sugar, it is taxed. Because that's the stipulation of.
If I could add, uh, something, just that, so the, the, the design of this campaign is based on, uh, other successful campaigns. So this approach that is being utilized for sugary beverages, um, the first one I believe was in Berkeley, was the, the city of Berkeley that, that got this approved. There have been, um.
Oakland had it approved in 2017 and their, uh, sugar purchases, their sugary sweet beverage purchases are down 23.1%.
And so this isn't, the, these, the way that this has been designed has been, uh, based on these other successful campaigns that have resulted in, in a both a positive impact on the reduction of the utilization of, or the acquisition of these, of, of, uh, sugary, uh, beverages, um, uh, and, um, and related health, health benefits to the community.
Um, thank you. Um, this is kind of personal for me on a couple of levels. Um, it started when I was campaign manager for Senator Bill Monning, who actually tried to pass state legislation that would have a similar effect. And, um, of all the controversial and strong legislation that Senator Monning and previously as an assembly member worked on, this is the one that got the fiercest pushback from the industry and it was not able to pass, uh, at the state level. And, um, uh, it's amazing how the doc- uh, Senator Monning and his staff, the abuse they took. Just do the right thing for people. Amazing, um, so I'm pleased with our city council locally taking up the banner. Um, uh, this is also personal for me because as some board members know, about over a dozen years ago, I had been, happened to have read a bunch about the effects of sugar on diet, not just in drinks, but in all parts of diet. Decided to eliminate all added sugars from my diet and it took some work, um, but no honey, no agave, no sugar, no sweeteners of any kind added to my regular diet. And my health has been so much better since then. I had only a mild case of COVID, period. And, um, uh, finally, as some trustees know, I would not have a mouth now empty of teeth if I had made that change a little bit earlier. It was in time for my general health, but I lost my teeth because I had a life until I stopped. Have my new teeth. So, um, I strongly support this, um, and I'd be happy to make a motion.
And a couple comments. So thank you very much for the presentation and I have seen something similar to that, um, description of the cubes, the sugar cubes. Um, and it's actually very good visual, thank you. I had a follow-up question to, um, previous and to the small businesses, because I had that same question, what is, does that also, I would appreciate a follow-up, um, if that includes like mini-markets, like 7-Elevens who have these little stores. Um, I know that there's two of them that are located across the street from Harbor High and kids go there in droves and that's exactly what they come back with, the N A and G drinks. Admit, I'm a purchaser of this as well. But, um, I'd be interested to know if that, if any, if small businesses is, includes those kinds of mini-markets, mini-markets as well, yes.
I will definitely follow up, uh, with an answer for you regarding it.
Okay, and, um, so that the two cents, it's, it's tagged on to the actual purchase, so the consumer has it and then it gets taxed to the, the.
Large distributor.
So it gets pressed on to them. Okay, so, um, you know, I think it's a, it's a great thing and, um, I, my concern is really is, is that a lot of our students who do purchase these things on their own, it's not necessarily parents and it's not necessarily at the larger stores, it is in the smaller, the smaller stores. So although it may be, um, a slight deterrent, um, you know, um, I think education at earlier ages is probably a really good use of funds. You know, our kids now, smoking is, you know, it's a, it's frowned upon, you know, by our high schools, most of our high school students, probably because they were taught from a very young age that it's not good for you. So, um, um, I think it's, I hope that that is part of the plan. Um, I think it's a great resolution and equally supportive.
Thank you.
Oh, uh, I had a, a question about the, the legal challenges and where that's at now. So I, I, I heard it mentioned that it was, um, it was halted, right, at the third?
Right, so in 2018, it was passed by a S- uh, Santa Cruz City Council and that was a one cent per fluid ounce tax. And then in, uh, the same year in 2018, Governor Jerry Brown said, signed the Keep Groceries Affordable Act. And so Santa Cruz City Council unanimously voted on June 25th this year that we can re-implement it, re- re- put it back on the ballot. So we're here to oppose it and we're asking for an endorsement so you guys can help us to increase public health and still, and at the same time, create a positive circle where we can put that money back into the community, because that's what the polls show, that the voters, um, are requesting. They're requesting that the SSV tax be implemented and that the money go towards keeping beaches and, uh, public parks safe and maintained and having safer school routes for kids, having programs for children and elderly and for having, um, services for all age residents in Santa Cruz City.
I, if I could add something, so just to clarify, so my understanding is, uh, uh, the legislation that Jerry Brown signed, that, uh, Keep Groceries Affordable Act was found to be unconstitutional and that it deprived cities of the ability to be able to, um, implement these kinds of taxes. As a result of that, the city council, uh, city councils across California are now able to, uh, enact, uh, this kind of, uh, this kind of, uh, policy practice. Um, and it is a ballot, it's going to be a ballot measure in November. And so, uh, the city council has approved its placement on the ballot, so it'll be a local decision by the local community in the city of Santa Cruz. And, um, and that is what you would be supporting.
A point of clarification, what I remember, and I didn't read the whole text before this meeting, is that not the retailer, it's the manufacturer. So a Coke sold anywhere, a little mom and pop store or in Costco is going to be taxed. But a lemonade stand where some kids put some sugar in with a lemonade, that's a small business, that's a very small business, is not going to be taxed. That's my understanding, is it's the producer, it's not the retailer that has the responsibility. But I could be wrong about that on this particular one, that's the way I remember it. But we'll, I'll get clarification.
Yes.
So I just want to be fully clear with, uh, with everybody and I just want to provide some explanation as well. But I will not be supporting this resolution. And full transparency, I work in the food industry, food manufacturing, and, um, I like the idea behind it, like I really do. I do think there's a lot of sugary beverages that have way too much sugar. I think we as Americans, our palates are just, has too much, right? Um, the reason why, and I am going to share a, a real-life example. So Trader Joe's Lemonade, uh, low calorie. That's something that, uh, my company, uh, sells and it's low calorie, so it has 40 calories, um, per serving. But it does have a little bit of sugar that is added. It's sold in 64 ounces, right now it's currently retailing at 3.29. At a two cents per ounce, that's an additional $1.28, which brings up the price to 4.57. So that is a dramatic increase, that's about a 33%, more than a 33% for something that's really not as bad as a Mountain Dew, right? It's not as bad as Coke. So I don't, I don't, I don't like. So I don't, I don't, I don't like the idea that. So we do need to regulate sugar, you know, but I have sugar, you know? It's, it's, sometimes we need to treat ourselves, you know? Sometimes it, it tastes good, you know, to be able to have a beverage that, that is sweet in moderation. Right? So my suggestion would be to, if you are going to tax, tax it based on the amount of sugar. So then that way, not all sugar added beverages are treated the same, because they're not all the same. They don't all contribute the same to someone's health and wellbeing. So I think that needs to be taken into consideration. The US, the FDA has tolerances, you know, for different nutrients and added sugars is one of them. If something has 5% or less of a daily value, then it's considered low, right? Low added sugars, but if it has 20% or more, then it's considered high. So I, I feel like if this bill, if this proposal had that type of value and treated sugary beverages differently, then that is something that I would support. But I think having a blind, you know, just sugar added, yes, no, it has a little bit of sugar, then it's going to be taxed. I think it does, I, I think we need to treat beverages differently. You know, again, based on how unhealthy they, they really are, as opposed to just having a blank, tax them all or, or, or not tax them.
I, it, just a kind of a point of order. I, I think since you mentioned that you work for a company, you may want to choose to abstain from the vote just because it may be a more appropriate, thank you.
I have a question and it's related to this, the tax. Who does the bookkeeping on?
The bookkeeping.
I mean, do the businesses themselves have to track what they are selling and how much money they taking in that relate to this?
That is a really good question.
Yeah, cause it could, it really could hurt small businesses.
So if you don't mind me stepping in, right now we do like a CRV, right? CRV for every can that we drink, we have to pay, you know, additional five, 10 cents. So the retailers are the ones who keep track of the number of Cokes that are sold. And they have to report it to, to the county, to the state. And then based on that number, that's how they collect those taxes.
And, and again, I apologize for interrupting. And again, small businesses are exempt from the tax. Small businesses are not going to, to be affected by the SSB tax.
I still think we're worried about the bookkeeping.
Small, small manufacturers, not small retailers, right? There's a difference.
Small, small retailers, yes.
Small retail will not be taxed?
It will not be taxed, no.
Okay. So then I could go to a corner market and buy Coke there and not get taxed?
Correct, yes. I, she was asking, she was asking about the franchises versus the, is, did I understand you correct?
Say that again?
The question that you were asking me that I was going to get back to you, you were, you were referring to the 7-Eleven or Circle K's, whether they're independently owned or franchises.
Cause a lot of them are individually privately owned.
Yes, that's what, that's how I, I interpreted it.
If I could, so Nick shared some, some information about, about the design of this, of that measure. So it says, it looks like it's the distributor that has some on there. This administration of the tax will be simple and straightforward. The process of tracking, collecting and remitting the tax will be modeled under, after the city of Berkeley. Distributors will use an online form for tracking and reporting the total number of taxable ounces of sugar sweetened beverages distributed and can remit payment using the city's online tax portal. Many local businesses already utilize the online tax portal for purposes of remitting other taxes and are familiar with. So it's at the, so the, the retailer basically, they, when they obtained a purchaser, distributor, the tax would already be included and the distributor is responsible. So it's, there's already an existing mechanism for this. This would just be another type of tax.
And, and if I could just add, I think part of the, the tax per fluid ounce, making it that extra dollar and some change, is, that's exactly part of what it's supposed to do, because it's going to boost that price just high enough for the teenager that comes in. And as you saw the statistics, two out of three teenagers locally in the city of Santa Cruz are drinking at least one soda a day. So if they're going to the 7-Eleven and they're purchasing a, a drink, a lemonade drink that's $1.50 extra, it's going to encourage them to sip smart, right? They're going to be like, oh my gosh, this is kind of expensive for my budget. Like I really, and it's going to cause them to think about their purchases. And it's going to, just like exactly what's happening in Oakland, 23.1% sugar, sugar sweetened beverages have gone down. So that is part of the process of promoting healthy habits in the city of Santa Cruz.
I have a question. You'd said it went down 23% in youth?
In general.
In general?
Yes.
Okay. I, I only ask you that because you said 23%. For a young kid like my kids. $10, you know, it's $10, whatever it may be, right? But they'd still buy that drink, still buy whatever they want, still buy lunch, whatever. We wouldn't encourage it, right? But I'd encourage them to drink. What it's like, I don't drink soda. I've drank a lot of sports drinks. But sometimes if you drink. Only concern I have right now is I'm hearing.
Right, and that would be.
And, and the, just thank you for clarifying. Distributors are the ones that are going to tax, are the ones that are going to be. Corporation, I guess the corporations are still, that's kind of funny.
Bruce? Well, I'm prepared to make a motion and vote if trustees would prefer on the November ballot. And we could wait, get answers to our questions and bring it back. But I, I don't want to. Otherwise I'll make, why don't I just make the motion and if it doesn't pass?
I agree. But I would make the motion for us to table this until we have full information and then bring it up on a future.
Okay.
Motion to table takes over. Yeah, we have, we should have to vote, right?
So a motion by Bruce. Motion by Rachel. The table, do I have a second?
Do we have a motion on the table?
Not yet.
Okay.
All second.
Just to be safe. So all those in favor of tableing this motion at this point, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. I, I have one other question. I really liked what Abel said. And has there been any discussion of the amount of sugar in these drinks? Because it, it could.
I think the tax is based on the amount.
No, it's. Yeah.
But not by the amount of sugar.
But not by ounces of sugar.
What ounces? So, I don't know, we're, we're already discussing again.
Yeah, but anyway, maybe that can be something that can be looked at.
I'm, I'm not sure if that, if changing the ballot proposal is, is going to be an option. But, but I'm, I'm sure that we would invite folks who return at, for our August meeting and, and we could put that on the agenda again and, and for your consideration.
And I'd just like to thank the board and say it was such a pleasure to meet each and every one of you. And thank you so much for your service and thank you, Dr. Sabah.
Thank you. And, and you'll be hearing more from, from Heather Thompson and some of the work that's being done in a variety of areas related to physical health.
Thank you so much for having me, it was a privilege to be here.
You're on the right, in the right direction. Thank you. Superintendent.
Yes, thank you so much. Just a few updates. We served several hundred students this summer during our summer school program. We received students from our own schools, but also from school districts that don't offer summer programs. And, and so it's, it's a wonderful opportunity to provide support in, in a variety of services. So summer school ended last Friday and our extended year special education program also ended then. I did want to, as you, last time I had announced that our COE X Academy students were in Tennessee participating in the world championships for MATE. And as you have heard, probably the, our students came in third place. And in the world championships, which is pretty amazing, this is the first time that we've partnered with X Academy. And we had representation students all over the county participating. We had also both students of, of different genders that were participating in, in this, in this event. You also probably heard that Cabrillo College came in first place, which is wonderful. And so great that two local teams have, were able to be successful. And so we're, we're planning on continuing this work. This summer, we're starting a new robotics program. And now it's a little different, MATE is underwater robotics. We're partnering with a, a local startup called ArmNG. Thank you, FarmNG. They have a robot called the Amiga, which is kind of a robotic tractor that you can program and build on. And, and it's used in a, in a lot of small farms. It's being used by UCSC for some, some experimentation and, and some, some really exciting projects like weeding. And so students are starting this weekend on this. If you'd like to drop in at Sequoia between 10:00 and 2:00 PM at Sequoia High School. The first step is to put together the Amiga and then they're going to design uses for it. And so this is an agricultural application of robotics. So we're really excited about this, this project, also with X Academy and partnership and with FarmNG. I did want to share that we received a grant to provide wellness coaches across, for at least 30 wellness coaches for students across the county. Wellness coaches are a new classification established by the state for people that have an AA degree or a BA degree or BS degree in a social sciences kind. They're able to, they're, even though they're not clinicians, they're able to provide certain services. Grant will help pay for those services. And, and so, and so we have lots of people that are already in this category, that are already serving students. Will be able to bill and get rewards. They're part of our behavioral health programming and supports students. I'd also like to share with you that the superintendents, at the end of, in, working in conjunction with Marsha Russell and our curriculum and instruction team, are, we're going to be working with them on a countywide math initiative. Math is one of the areas where we are really struggling. Our numbers on the state assessments and a variety of local assessments show that, that mathematics is really where. And so there is a new math framework that this, that has built up by the state. And the districts across the county are saying, we need your support through the county office. We need your support to implement a framework to be able to ensure that our, our classrooms are engaging and that we are finding ways not only to support students, but really to, to accelerate their learnings at a place where our demonstrating mastery. And so this is going to be a, a countywide initiative that we'll be bringing back to you with. We've done commitments from every single school district. Very far reaching and so. And it's going to entail professional development and and really helping the school districts to put together a plan for themselves in terms of how they're going to ensure that.
Marsha, is there anything that you'd like to add to in terms of, or you're helping to lead this effort across the county? We'd like to share some important development opportunities. And I'm, I'm going to ask that Ms. Valentin talk to us a little bit about some, some, some conference opportunities and some, and the ethics requirements you've been hearing about on emails.
Yes, I get to speak to you all about some fun stuff. So we have two upcoming professional development opportunities to attend to separate conferences with CSBA. The first one is in September. This was formerly known as the CCBE's Conference. It has now been rebranded to the County Board Member Services Conference. The dates are September 13th through the 15th. I have confirmation from one trustee that they will be attending. If anyone else would like to attend, please let me know or send me an email. Early bird special runs out in August, August 5th, I believe, so let me know soon. And then there is another conference opportunity. This is the annual education conference. This has been in the past in San Diego. This year it is in Anaheim, not Disneyland, but Anaheim. And it is December 5th through the 7th. One trustee will be attending this conference as well, so please let me know if you would like to attend. The hotel room blocks are filling up, so this one should be higher in your priority if you really want to go. And then we do have a requirement from AB 2158. Trustees are required to participate in an ethics training every two years. And so those are some opportunities to fulfill that requirement. I've sent you an email if you are coming close to your two-year deadline. So please check out that email and let me know when you plan to take this ethics training. These do come with a fee, so if you are interested in any of these dates, again, please let me know so that I can cover that registration fee for you. There's any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Few upcoming events, I did want to share that we will be, we have initiated the process of recruitment for a countywide trustee. We're hoping to do, as we discussed last year, two trustees. You remember Oscar was a countywide trustee from Pato Valley High School. So we're going to try to get two students to participate here. One would be a countywide student and the other would be an alternative education student. Remember, we worked really hard. We had a couple of times we were not able to, for the student. This year, but reminder that stuff the bus, August 3rd, as we discussed earlier. And we would love it if you could join us at our staff kickoff on August 7th. It's in the morning of, of, of that date at Twin Lakes and at their conference center. And, and also an administrative kickoff with Ron Clark. He's a high-energy gentleman, he'll be in the evening, kind of a late afternoon, evening time on September 23rd in the Live Oak communities. Also just wanted to share that I've had a chance to meet and work with our two new superintendents, Heather Contreras at PBUSD and Patrick Sanchez at Live Oak. And they are both wonderful. They're good, they're very excited about the work that they're doing around running. We're excited about having a really positive working relationship with those superintendents as we do with the other. It'd be an exciting school year. And that is it for my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Actually on the agenda. Okay, okay, we, we can.
President Roth, on agenda item 11, ad hoc standing committee reports and actions. You are able to appoint trustees to committees, so you can do that agenda item.
You'd rather talk to me first? Okay. Are as committee reports.
Or on trustee.
Trustee reports. Lost it, okay. Thank you, Sandra. Be sure it wasn't a cat. Anyway, uh, Edward?
I don't have much to report. I was, um, I was at the Live Oak, uh, school district meeting when Superintendent, uh, Sanchez was appointed. So that was, uh, pretty exciting and I'm glad, uh, you know, uh, I'm looking forward to seeing what kind of collaboration and, you know, it's, um, I'm already seeing really good stuff. Uh, uh, so I'm super excited for that. Um, and that's, uh, that's about it for me. It's slowing down, it's summertime, so, not much to report.
Thank you. Ed?
Nothing to report.
Bruce?
Well, I had the fun of the Student Trustee Academy and I'll do that again. Um, uh, also took the time to watch the whole Capitol Advisor's latest budget report and, um, education did pretty well in California. They called out our own Senator John Leir as advocates for budget and that's what I see. Pretty much every, everything. Let me just say, it makes my summer to do that trustee academy, so, um, still kinda going the feeling.
If I could, if, could I just make a comment on, and I just, I'd, I'd really wanna thank you. It was considered, as the students mentioned, it was one of the highlights. And, um, and both Andres and I, um, wanted to ask that you do the practice part of it, which you did last year, because I think that would have made it, made it even better, because it was, it was really an outstanding presentation.
I cut it short this time.
Rachel? Um, I will, um, just, um, reiterate, I also attended, um, the Student Trustee, the Board Academy. Again, they were an impressive group. It was a lot of fun, um, watching them interact with one another and role-play or board meeting, which was a lot of fun. Um, and, um, enjoyed your presentation, thank you. And also listened in on the, the board, uh, or the, um, presentation on the budget.
I also wanna congratulate you, Bruce. I think that, uh, all of them were really well-spoken. Um, and one of them even called you out specifically, like, oh, I learned that from you. So, good job. Uh, it, it seems like it definitely, um, hit home, you know, they definitely learned, learned from that, so, thank you for doing that. And, um, I don't have a report this month.
I attended the, uh, Senate Committee and, uh, also listened in on the Capitol Advisors. Kind of, uh, with, with education, it was state of California. And really that's. Then I don't know that we have any committee meetings besides.
I think the Policy Committee is gonna have some work coming from the budget and the, all of legislation. Uh, so I don't know if that'll be by, by next. Coming.
Uh, our next scheduled meeting is August fifteenth at four PM. And forward to seeing you all. Meeting is adjourned.